Welcome to the December 29th meeting of the zoning subcommittee. Tonight is our semi-annual zoning forum. It's your chance to tell us what to do and how to do it. And so, most of the meeting will consist of your comments. We'll listen, we'll ask questions if we need to. But for the most part, you're going to be doing the talking. And we'll see how far we get. I should mention this meeting is being recorded for later rebroadcast by Amherst Media. Are there any other announcements? Okay, so, first item on the agenda says review of current and ongoing projects. We looked at this last time around. It's basically the leftovers from the last couple town meetings and some things that we have been meaning to pick up. This is not necessarily our spring agenda, but it's a jumping off point. Mr. Tucker, do you want to say anything about this?
Sure, let's just run through these quickly. There are still residential rental use amendments out there. There, a minor conflict was created by the passage of both Article 14 and Article 17 of the Fall Town Meeting warrant, and so we need to look at that and see how to resolve that. It's not a big deal. You will be receiving from the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group some recommendations, and the recommendation may be don't do anything, or it may be do the following, or more than one option, to try and address the question of what works best in terms of occupancy limits. We have a foreign-related bylaw now. If you apply it to buildings of greatly varying sizes, in some places it works, other places it's not safe, other places it's silly. So you, we need to have some way of looking at that, and that's what they are going to look at and recommend to you. You have a pending functional family definition question. You have some definitions and some research on that. You need to decide whether you want to go forward with it for the spring. That was your intent back in the fall. With some zoning changes under our belt, addressing rental regulations, rental properties, with a rental regulation general bylaw in development for the Spring Town Meeting, you might want to consider coming back to the other side of the issue that created the rental problems in the first place, which is inadequate housing supply, among other things, and among many other things that are and will be addressed by rezoning of the village centers. Part, some of the, you received at least four different emails from individuals, and you're welcome to read through those possibly for next time. And they have some questions about that. But for purposes of discussion, staff have said Atkins Corner would be relatively low, relatively, low-hanging fruit on this because there is no village center there yet, and there are no significant existing potential student housing problems or other rental housing problems. It's the development of a new center. So that would be relatively unimpeded by whatever progress we have made on the other regulatory end of things. You had been working on trying to rework the way in which findings and criteria are organized in the zoning bylaw in terms of what the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals use when they're reviewing permits. That's something you had talked about coming back to. Article 18 on the Fall Town Meeting warrant was referred back to you, and it had a strong historic preservation component. So one of the things you could do is look at that question generally, and one of the options is to extend the demolition delay period from 12 to 18 months, as a number of communities in Massachusetts have done. You'd need to look at that and decide whether it made sense. You have for some years actually been asked to look at sustainable alternative energy requirements and low-impact development requirements, which have predominantly to do with runoff and so forth on sites after construction. This was a component of the village center zoning and could go forward on its own as a set of requirements. Also, under the village center rezoning question, particularly given that the two centers that you had looked at were surrounded by farmland in many cases, there was some thought given to trying to assist in the process of having farms succeed in the area by allowing for the development of agricultural processing facilities, done carefully. Transfer of development rights you have been working on with representatives from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Again, some of that is addressed in the emails that you have been sent. Some concerns are expressed about that. One of the things that I would note about that, that you will recall from the presentations by PVPC, is that while in many cases those regulations are set up to allow the transfer of rights during sort of the literal preservation of outlying lands and the development of lands in existing developed centers, for the most part, in this area, what has been used is the provision of those regulations that allow developers to pay into a fund in lieu of actually preserving something. So they, the fund then is set aside for the purpose of preserving farmland, conservation lands, and historic resources, depending on what they're doing. So, and that's the much more common thing that happens, that there's actually not a whole lot of transferring going on, but the regulations are established to allow for it. Technical fixes, we have at least one, there may be some others coming. This is something we have run into in terms of past practice, for which we have no language in the bylaw. For many years, non-conforming properties, physically non-conforming properties in residential districts, if the building was non-conforming in a significant fashion, then the use, whatever it was that was being proposed to go onto that property, or be added to or changed on that property, was considered to be non-conforming even if what was changing did not actually change the physical non-conformity. And some years ago, we put some provisions in the bylaw that allowed, under certain circumstances, the building commissioner to allow those things to go forward without having to go for a special permit. Because case law, the accumulated wisdom of lawsuits being decided, has essentially consistently said, well, if something's non-conforming, then the whole thing has to be looked at under a special permit as a change in the non-conforming use, even though it's, in this case, the building. One of the things that we have noticed, and have known for a long time, is downtown Amherst, many of our village centers were built long, long before anybody thought of developing dimensional regulations for zoning, and they are non-conforming practically to a property. And so rather than getting into a situation where we have to require special permits for altering a non-conformity every time somebody wants to do something with a downtown property, we're looking at the option of creating similar administrative relief, as was done for the residential properties, for commercial properties in town and village centers, in some cases in commercial districts, that sort of thing. That's just a thumbnail sketch of that. And we may well get petition articles and citizen rezoning requests. Want you to bear in mind, as if you would be allowed to forget, the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group is in the process of developing, the early stages of developing rental regulations, and as those go forward, aspects of those will need to interact with or be consistent with zoning, or vice versa. We may need to adjust things in the zoning to come into conformance with what the rental regulations are doing, if it is judged that that's a wise thing to do, whatever it is the regulations are doing. So, we're just, that's sort of a moving target, and we need to be aware of that. So that's sort of the summary of what's on the sheet. It is not a complete list. You have a much, many of you have seen it, I didn't bring it here this time, but there's a long, three-page list of accumulated amendment needs. These are sort of the most pressing and the ones that were in front of you already.
Okay. So, thank you. We'll move right on to the citizen comment period. I would ask people to come forward, identify yourself with a microphone, and let us know what you feel about this list, about things that are not on this list, about specific details of any of these items, and if you could be mindful of the time and how many people are remaining, so that we can get to everyone before the Planning Board meeting And as well, if you agree with a previous speaker, if you could just note that rather than recapitulate. Okay, so, who would like to begin? Anyone? Or will this be a very short meeting?
Chair?
Yes, please.
Before, I definitely want to use most of our time for public comment, but if we wanted to respond back to Mr. Tucker's summary, could we, could we ask questions or make a quick comment on what we just heard before we open it up?
Okay, sure. Let's make a quick.
Is it okay? So, Mr. Tucker, the bracket on proceeding with the North Amherst Village Center, I was just unclear how that was decided, because this is a great starting point as a staff list, but this is not, not yet the board's list, and I-
No, that's right.
And so, I just want to reserve space to say that the outcome on North Amherst is not, the timing, whatever, isn't known yet in my mind. I just wanted to be, see where, you know, where that came from.
Well, one of the, it sort of contains its own thinking, that the recommendation from staff is that the subcommittee wait to bring that forward until the results of the Housing Production Plan and the market studies can be incorporated. But those, the Housing Production Plan is almost done, and we're in the, just about to sign a contract with a consultant to do the market studies, and they will both be done prior to the Spring Town Meeting. So the timing may line up there for spring, or, and what this was allowing for was the possibility that consideration of whatever the results were would take longer than would have things ready for the spring, and we might be aiming at the fall.
Okay. Okay, I'll ask again. Who would like to begin? Ms. Adams, please.
Maureen Adams, Precinct 10. I'm going to respond to the items that were on the worklist and then have a further summary point of my own, so it's something like seven points that I can, think I can make fairly briefly. The first one has to do with the presumption of possible contradiction between Articles 14 and 17. Simply want to remind the group that we were very clear with 17, that we had a narrow view of what we wanted in converted dwellings, that it would be designated either as an owner/occupant or as a qualified resident manager. We understand that 14 had a broader list that had possibilities on it that we specifically left out because they have not worked in the past. And so my assumption would be that 17 would thereby supersede 14, and that there would not be difficulties, and I'd be interested to know if there are difficulties that I've not anticipated.
Just from a technical standpoint, Town Meeting adopted them both. It adopted Article 14 with all the language that was in it, and then it adopted Article 17, which essentially amended a piece of the language which had been encompassed by Article 14. So we ended up with both references to how rental property management would be handled in the, in the language. It's just a technical hitch in the get-along, so to speak. And all we need to do really is for the zoning subcommittee to take a look at that and decide which way they want to go, or if they want to amend them one or both and bring that to the spring. I would tend to agree with you that the Town Meeting's intent was made clear by the adoption of both articles.
But also by the subsequent adoption of something that limited a prior adoption.
That's right.
So my-
It does not, it's a, zoning is a mechanical process.
I understand.
It's like editing a document for publication. Things get added in the order they get added, and unless you say, we're putting this one in and we're taking that one out, they both end up there. So this is just, it's really just cleanup.
Okay, well, my, you know that the devil is always in the details, as one says, and my concern would be that in cleanup, we would be ending up with something that we had not wanted. My own practice as a writer is that when I edit, the later decision is the decision that holds. I don't edit things so that everything that was a track change earlier remains. So, in any event, my view had been that the later article would supersede the earlier, and I would be very distressed if we would lose the emphasis that we so consciously made. So that's one point. I do think that a problem that remains is the definition of qualified, and one, for qualified resident manager. And I think that that's going to have to take some discussion, because there again, we did agree that qualified does not mean pointing to a student and saying, you're it. But still, I think that there can be some interesting discussions about what qualified means in a resident manager. Okay, so, so much for that point. The second one has to do with the four unrelated, and I just wanted to note that I've read some possibilities about looking at occupancy designations as per square footage, and I think once again, we would be very opposed to something that would end up in historic neighborhoods with overcrowding through a different doorway. Having tried to prevent overcrowding by the four or fewer unrelated, to then permit overcrowding because there was a certain amount of space that allowed you to make more small apartments. I don't know if that's the intention, but I saw some of those possibilities, and I wanted to acknowledge the worry at the onset. The third has to do with Atkins Corner and then the possibility of North Amherst. There are two points that I'd like to make there. One is, it was very confusing to almost all of us who were neighbors, activists on these issues. The overlay of form-based zoning with actual rezoning on the ground, maybe that's not an accurate distinction, but one seemed to me to refer to the way things need to look, and the other one had to do with the actual usage and the number of people involved. And I would urge that in future iterations, these approaches be kept separate, because I know for many of us, it made us quite suspicious about what was actually happening in these. And a process concern, I think we would save ourselves a lot of trouble if with Atkins Corner, and certainly even more so with North Amherst, there could be some kind of preliminary discussions with the persons involved, so that we wouldn't have to be organizing ourselves and getting ourselves here to give you feedback that really maybe should have happened in a much more preliminary venue when talking about either North Amherst, or Atkins Corner, or any other area where there are neighbors who are looking with great concern about what is intended and what might actually happen. So that's a kind of process consideration. With the transfer of development rights, it's the same old tune. I think once again, we're concerned about what the impact of that will be on residential neighborhoods as possible receiving areas, and so we'll be here to see how that develops. When it comes to the next issue of kind of possibilities for the future, some of us have talked about this already, I think that the most important single issue for this town is to figure out appropriately located and appropriately developed off-campus student housing. I don't think that that will necessarily solve the RG neighborhood, because I think that will always be a draw for students and for landlords and for rentals. So I don't think that the one problem will solve the other. Nonetheless, I think that the kinds of problems, or the suspicion that we had on Gateway and other areas, which were being called mixed use, which looked to us as if they were certainly going to be student complexes, it would be very wise to figure out where can we put student complexes of different sizes, possibly in some cases in, you know, in the, in the hundreds. I mean, it might be possible if the Pacheco ruling could somehow be resolved for Massa, at least for this campus, so that there could be public-private partnerships on University Drive or Massachusetts Avenue. That's one possibility. Possibly 20, 30 student units, cooperative housing. Some of us have mentioned it might be possible on Olympia Drive. There are lots of areas that are not abutting or within intact historic neighborhoods. And I think we should solve that problem before we go very much farther, because it seems to be the problem that is driving all else before it. The issue on rental permits, I'm certainly hoping, and I think we'll be arguing this with the work group, that an all-out inspection program be gradually phased in or ramped up, and that we not lose the focus of the places where we really need to be looking at permits, and whether the permits would enable us to catch people who are violating zoning regulations as it is, and for whom we've not had the kind of access that we've needed to be able to enforce even the things that we have on the book. So I worry about a large-scale inspection program superseding and swamping the real effort that we need of a more targeted permit system. And I use the language of permit rather than inspection as the focus that we are hoping for. Permits that you can then deny on the basis of performance. My next-to-last point is that I think we need a much more frank appraisal of the contradictions within the master plan that have become so apparent to us in historic residential neighborhoods, between infill and development, which sounds very positive from a planning perspective, but, but has negative consequences in the other effort of, or another effort of the master plan, which is to sustain historic, valuable, unique neighborhoods. And so it's a very interesting dilemma, it seems to me, about how you do the one without destroying the other. And I think that we need a franker discussion of those competing goals. And that leads me to the final point, which I think we've raised from time to time. In my view at least, the master plan has never been fully vetted by a large public hearing. I know the history that led to the master plan, and I also know, because I'm a textual critic myself, that there are differences between the plan that had large public input and the plan that was finally passed by the Planning Board. And I think that it would be very helpful for all of us in moving forward if there could be some more public vetting, maybe in Town Meeting, maybe through other hearings, so that people would really understand what is in the master plan, what is not in the master plan, and what the contradictions look like. Because we refer to it quite piously, I think, when we want to. It has something of the standing of a sacred book with all of the textual inconsistencies of scriptures, and I think it would be very valuable for us to have that kind of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ergood? Before we begin, if anyone has a question for any of the speakers, please don't hesitate to raise your hand.
I'm doing notes tonight, so if people can just say their, their name, and, do we need precinct?
No, just, yeah.
Hello, I am Tom Ergood, ZBA liaison to the zoning subcommittee. I would like to comment on one of the points raised by Ms. Adams, that's specifically being the definition of resident manager, and then make a point about the bylaw that I'll be making, not as formally as, for the ZBA, but for myself. So the resident manager, Ms. Adams said she thought there should be some discussion about what qualification means. So the definition that's now in the books is, it's a live-in resident, and now I'm speaking as one who will sit on panels, who must apply this definition in applications for special permits. So it's a live-in resident of a residential, rental residential use, qualified and responsible. So qualified for what? For implementation of the property management plan. That's one thing, for implementation of the property management plan, and for managing, coordinating the maintenance, housekeeping, and administrative duties for the rental units under their charge. I think of these two things that the residential, that the resident manager is responsible for, to be qualified for, it's the first. It's not the second, it's really not the maintenance, housekeeping, administrative duties so much that are the interest of the zoning subcommittee and Town Meeting in adopting this definition as, so it must be in the first, it's in the implementation of the, of the, of the property management plan. So currently, up until December 11th, when the ZBA had administrative hearing, the rules and regulations of the ZBA in Section 3, in Article 3, Section 2.1, defined a property management plan. And in that property management plan, there was nothing that looked like it touched on things of real concern about the, you know, the kinds of behaviors that might take place in, in some of these residential units. So the ZBA did, did the vote to amend the property management plan, to include in the property management plan a requirement that there be a complaint response plan. So there, we, that complaint response plan, that's a, those are, that's a three-word term that comes from the, from something that the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group is considering, an outline of, I think, of regulations. So I think that by putting that into the property management plan, we are, at least we have the, we're sort of grabbing a hold of the, of the, we have the response, we have the capability to be considering the kinds of things that the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods is concerned about, and I think that are, you know, really of issue in a lot of these rental, residential rental uses. So that turns me to two things. Article 13 amended Section 3.2211, non-owner-occupied duplex, and requires that the board require the ongoing services of a qualified professional property management company, the presence of an onsite resident manager, or similar provision for property management of the rental use as a condition for approval. That's a little different from the, what's now in Article 3.2, 3.3241, converted dwellings, where there's, we've talked about the conflict, the existing provision is, mirrors that language in the new, that Article 13 adopted, and it is broader than the language in Article 17 that Ms. Adams mentioned. The thing I'd mention there is in Article, in newly amended Section 3.33221, 3211, it currently in Number 4, requires that there be a property management plan, and that there be a response plan. So this response plan, even though, you know, it's a, it narrows it a bit, because it pulls in that same concept that now we've put into the, into the management plan in our, in the bylaw, which I think grabs a hold of the concerns that have been under consideration here. But still, you have, I would say that's a bit of an inconsistency. These are still, you know, uses that aren't that different, the non-owner-occupied duplexes and converted dwellings. So the ZBA will now have a requirement, in the case of close-in converted dwellings, to, to require either a property, a resident manager or owner occupied. In other converted, in other converted dwellings, it would be required to require a owner occupied. And in non-owner-occupied duplexes, it's this range of different types of persons who would be managing the property. So I think you might consider that too, as something where consistency could be helpful.
I think actually, although, part of the inconsistency, as we were discussing before, is the result of the sequence of adoption without taking other things out. But there's a distinction, or there can be a distinction, between a two-unit rental property and a converted dwelling that has three or four units in it in terms of impact. And in the case of a three- or four-unit property, it is more important, I think, for the requirement that was added by Article 17 to be present, that you have someone on the property who is responsible. Whereas for a rental duplex, depending on what the circumstances the ZBA encounters, that may not always be necessary. So the, and the fact that there's a range described here, I don't think is necessarily an inconsistency. It may reflect characteristics of the slight differences between those, those uses.
Well, I, that's a helpful distinction from the standpoint of the board that's required to apply these definit- to apply these definitions. So is it, is it fair to say that in converted dwellings, that there's basically an assumption that it's more than two units?
No, if I may. No, in any number of cases.
I know, I don't mean to say a requirement, but what you're saying is it can be, easily can be.
A converted dwelling can be a two-unit structure. And as a converted dwelling now, that would require a resident manager, at least as currently interpreted, whereas a duplex would not. And that is, that is a mild inconsistency. However, again, converted dwelling can be three or four. In some cases, we will have grandfathered larger ones with more units. And so in those instances, the more units you get, the more need there is for someone on the property who's responsible for responding on behalf of the property owner, and being present to have some handle on what's going on. But you're right, if you've got two here and you've got two here, what's the difference?
And if I may, it leaves one more than qualified, because in the 3.3221, it's possible that the solution is a qualified property management company. And what I would say there is, we have the responsibility also to define what qualified means.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Gilbert, Precinct 10, Lincoln Avenue. I'm concerned about this property management company, because I've lived on Lincoln Avenue for 28 years. And on the corner of Amity and Lincoln, there was a house, multifamily house, owned by one owner, who rented it for 20-some-odd years to graduate students. No problems. Eagle Crest now is the management company, and they've like quadrupled the number of people living in there, and there's a lot of noise. There's another house directly across the street from me that was, is owned by a family that doesn't live in the area, and it has about four or five dwellings. No problems. Last year, Eagle Crest took over, and I haven't made it, but some other neighbors have made noise complaints. And Eagle Crest is the management company. So I really would like you to take much caution in when you look at management companies and who's managing, because we might be just adding a layer of other problems. Thank you.
If I may, that was why the term qualified got in there, and that's why there were options for the permit granting body to decide whether or not what was being proposed to them made sense. You can't exclude it, because you've got, you may in some instances have property management companies that are not doing their job. There are some that are. So you need to keep that option in there. But what this does, allow for the permit granting bodies to have a range of choice, and look at what's coming, what's being proposed to them, and decide, does this make sense or doesn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Fox, Precinct 10. In thinking through how to reconcile the 17 and 14, just to get to the heart of it, it seems to me that what we all know is that in the absence of a person who is a responsible person onsite, whether you have two units, or three units, or four units, that you generally have a huge difference in outcome. With a responsible person onsite, we generally don't have problems, whether it's the owner occupant or a responsible manager. So I encourage you to think through how to reconcile these in light of what real life tells us, that we really need a responsible manager onsite, whether it's two units, or three units, or four units. And you try to reconcile that within the language of the two bylaws that were adopted. And I think town meeting strongly stands for that. That's my interpretation of it. On the foreign related, just a couple of comments. One, I just wanted to confirm, what I know Jonathan Tucker knows, and I hope you all know, that we have the legal opinion of counsel, I think it was former counsel, but that absolutely the foreign related is enforceable, there's no question, so that when anybody, if anybody raised the question, is it really enforceable to have a limit of four, the answer is yes, that there are a number of cases that so hold. But I would encourage you not to have the foreign related as an issue before you at this time, there are too many other important issues. When you get to that, I would hope that you would consider not just going to a higher number, but going to a lower number. That it might make more sense in smaller units to have three or two, rather than four. But increasing the amount would be undesirable, at least in primarily residential neighborhoods. Then just a couple of other comments on the transfer of development rights. Again, I think it's very premature, because I've done some reading about them, and they aren't used that often, because it seems that there has to be understandably, a real understanding within the town or community as to, what are the areas that are to be the senders, and what are the areas to be the receivers? And the receivers are the principal people who concern, the communities that are concerned. So if there's going to be development in a particular neighborhood, because they're the receivers of the transfer of development rights, then it's really important to have an agreement town-wide as to what, you know, who should be receivers. So it's easy to designate somebody else's neighborhood and not your own. And I think it comes back to what Maureen Adams was saying, that we really have not had the kind of broad consideration of the master plan that is well overdue, I think. Because I think that would be, the transfer of development rights would be a very appropriate subject as you think through the master plan. Where do we think it's appropriate to send rights to or from, and who might receive them? And it's usually very controversial, hard to do. So I wouldn't want you to spend a whole lot of time on that. Let me see if there was one other thing. Oh, just to reinforce again, and to stay within your guidelines about permitting, we really want in every way to encourage whoever is involved in influencing the outcome of the permitting effort, to focus on problem areas. We think it can get out of control if you're taking on all aspects of registration, permitting, et cetera. And at the last meeting of the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods, I strongly encourage them, as part of their agenda, to have a financial plan and a personnel plan that would accompany any goals of the committee. Because without such a financial plan, without knowing who the personnel are to effectuate what we're trying to accomplish, a plan can far overreach and be very disappointing. So we need to be realistic about what we can do, and for that reason, really focus on what we need to do first. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Just to, that's the second time that's been mentioned, so let me respond to that. The town is very much considering what kind of funding and personnel resources would be needed. The town, I believe at this point, is not assuming we're going to try to do everything in the first three to six months, that this would be something that would be phased in. However, when you write regulations, you cannot in the regulations target specific areas. It's more that the problem, the problem properties, the problem areas are the ones that are going to receive the most attention, once we have the resources to do that, because they will be demanding that attention, and we'll get it.
I just wanted to come back to something else, just on the residential manager and qualifications. What do you see as your role in helping to develop the definition of a qualified residential manager? Is that your responsibility to some extent, or whose responsibility is that? Is that going to be simply up to the zoning board of appeals to interpret, or will you provide guidance? How does that actually work?
Can you respond to that? Go ahead.
Well, we received a letter from Cindy Jones, the email, I assume it's on the table. And she offered some ideas, I'm not saying they're the ultimate ideas, but it got me thinking that those were some things to consider, and that perhaps the landlord community could help with that. We talked about an online, you know, quiz or certification, it doesn't have any standing, you know, under state law or anything. And we do that for, I think, conflict of interest. There's a certification, it's all online, sort of a self-learning. So it was something I hadn't thought about. I think there were two ideas there that the landlord community had suggested. I'm sure there's other ones, but I think that kind of a simple, at least know the town bylaw, and show that you know it, and that you own a copy of it, or, and there were a couple of simple things. So, I don't know. I think it's an area that needs development, because I don't think we spent any time on it, but I think there's, we can mine our community for some good ideas that aren't expensive or particularly complicated.
So would this be something that you'd be receptive if some of us wanted to just make some suggestions, as she did? So it'd be a good idea for us to send them to you, and then you can consider them? Good, okay. Thank you very much.
Let me just note on that last point, that there are, in Massachusetts and every other state we've looked, certification programs for property managers. That is to say, someone can take a course, and I have no idea what the depth and rigor of these courses are, but you can go through a process of getting certified as a property manager. So that's another sort of threshold that might be involved in this.
If I could respond, that's usually for professional property managers of complexes, and it has a lot to do with financial and accounting. And I don't know that just grabbing that, one of those programs, is going to address our needs. I've looked at some of those kinds of trainings, and I, unless there's something out there I don't know about, that may not be the kind of fit we're talking about.
And there might be other, there might be levels of qualification as well.
There might be. But it's often around, a lot of state and federal law around fair housing, eviction, and financial stuff. But yeah, there might be something. But the ones I've seen don't, aren't really. What I liked about Ms. Jones's idea was simple, and I could see how it could work easily without a lot of administrative costs to either the town or to the applicant, but yeah, there might be some.
Ms. Parker?
So most of us here that own a house are qualified property managers, because we, you know, we don't park on our lawn, we take our trash out, put our trash in, we, so in a way, I'm quite wary of, you know, testing me on, you know, how to evict a tenant or whatever. So I think in some ways, in the same way we would evaluate whether or not to leave our child home alone, is, I mean, I think that there's kind of a track record, there's character witnesses, there's a lot of measures that, you know, we could use. But I guess I'm really wary of kind of setting up a registration, or even like a certification system, where we might be not catching the, we may not be catching the fish that we're trying to catch.
Okay.
And I actually prefer, personally, falling on the broader qualified property manager, which actually leads to, in my opinion, leaves a great deal of discretion, for discretionary use anyway, to the zoning board of appeals. So this is not a by right use. In the case of ones that are going to the ZBA, it's up to their discretion, and they have the discretion of, you know, frankly, determining who's qualified and who's not.
You have a quick response?
Tom Ergood, ZBA liaison, quick comment. Well, I'm not sure I would use the word discretion, it's up to our judgment in applying the provision of the bylaw, and I guess you could say that's discretion, but sometimes discretion sounds like it's, you know, it's up to our whim. And I think we have to take into account, you know, we have to use good judgment, and I would suggest that because the first times this term are, is, the first times this term will be applied, I think will be in ZBA proceedings, that interested parties who have suggestions on how resident managers should, how that term should be interpreted and applied, should take advantage of the open nature of the ZBA hearings and come and make comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, do you want?
I wish we could open it up. It's always like, I don't like having my back tonight.
Yes, that's a good point.
I, I guess I'm here today just.
Could you just say your name for the rest?
Cynthia Holmes. I'm here to introduce myself. I live at 1270 West Street, which is on the east side of 116, the last house before you head up the notch. So my butter to the south is the Rodeo Gun Club. I support foreign-based zoning, I support village zoning, village rezoning. I do that largely out of self-interest, but that's as good a reason as any. I've been there since 83. At that time, my taxes were 1,700, they're now 5,300. For the first time in that time, I came to a quarter where I couldn't afford to pay my taxes. I'm an empty nester, almost. I have an acre, a little over an acre, and over 200 feet of frontage. My understanding is that if the village zoning were to pass in that area, I could have two homes on that property instead of one. I don't think that's particularly unreasonable for a lot that size. You know, all other things being equal, I'm looking to cash out. So I'm just here to make myself known that those who want to protect the rural nature of the east side of West Street, to please contact me. I was really in shock at that meeting in the fall. I had no idea this was going to happen, and nobody talked to me about the rural nature of my property. I have a very old barn, it's starting to fall down. I'm going to have to decide whether to let it fall down, and I imagine the next fight is, it may be of historic value. I do not know. It's quite old, and it has a lovely shape. But I don't have the resources to keep it going, if it's on its way down. Or the, you know, that's not, if I did have the resources, that's not where they would have to go. So in terms of that area, it's a wonderful area to live, the trails are beautiful, I go out there every day, I take advantage of them. I'd be delighted if my property were converted to some sort of access to that, those trails. I have a very flat space. Half my acre is flat, you know, road frontage. Be a great little parking area. I also could imagine that being commercially zoned. And the reason I think that is, again, I think there's a lot of protected area that makes that part of town still very livable, even if you had several small commercial properties on that side or the other side. My idea is that this rotary, which I think is wonderful, it, that's not rural. And the village, in my mind, the only village is Atkins', I mean, or the only commercial property. So the idea of a village is incomplete in my mind. I love that area, I'd like to stay in it, I do not know whether I'd stay in that house or not. But I'm just saying that because I, I feel like I have a commitment to the area, but I have a very different view than some about how it could look in the future. So I just want to support the proposed plan, and hope that we do revisit it, because I like to do something kind of creative with my property.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Melissa Perro, Precinct 1. I was hoping somebody else would say what I need to say, but I haven't, so I'm here to sit. You have Janet Keller's letter to you, which emphasizes the need, if there's going to be any development or changes in North Hamas, which we would welcome, for proper fundamental planning. And I was pleased to hear two people suggest that we go back to the master plan, because I think what Janet's suggestion in terms of build out maps and things where we can really see where everything is really see where everything is and what is, you know, the water issues, the landscape issues, the village issues, all layered on top of each other so that you can really see where we could put more housing without being destructive to the environments that are there. And I think it's, what she's suggesting is very good, and I'm glad that others have sort of said we need to go back to the starting ground, too. I think I felt that way about North Amherst, too, that we'd had this good charrette at the beginning where people were cooperating and had some really good and creative ideas. I would love to revisit that and see whether the town now would not be able to help with making more of that possible in terms of bringing some commercial and making it a village again with a market and agricultural focus with the university taking over that land that's down our way to, for the Ag College, I believe. I think it's very appropriate that we have more agricultural focus in North Amherst in terms of activities. And I'm glad you've got the agricultural processing as an option and that you're looking at, including that, because I think that's very appropriate. And it can go out from that in terms of cooking schools or, you know, beyond. I don't, I mean, there's so many ways to go with it, but it seems that the town needs a balance to just having the downtown, which everybody has to have, and the student academic areas. But we need other things, too. And I think North Amherst really lends itself to that because of its sort of outlying situation somewhat and its connection to the conservation and agricultural areas that feed this town. And so I would love to sort of go back to the beginning again and think again about North Amherst, not just as a place for putting, I'm sorry to say, housing, dense housing to meet the housing need, but to incorporate housing into something much bigger, much more connected, much more integrated, and to make room for more housing in that for everybody. The other great complaint I've heard about Amherst is that people can't afford to live here. Well, North Amherst used to be the place that people could afford to live. And I'd like to see that happen again. We do, in fact, on Summer Street, have two vacant houses and two lots for sale. And it's interesting to me that those aren't, don't seem to be particularly attractive to anybody, because I think North Amherst is sort of off the map as far as living in Amherst is concerned. People don't consider it living in Amherst. And I think that's a great shame. I think this could be a very appropriate place for more reasonable housing, for families to live, for professionals and people who work in the town to come. Your policemen and so forth that were here can't afford to be here. And I think we need to think of North Amherst in a different way. I'd also like you to consider, in your options for student housing, the idea of boarding houses. I know I'm from across the Atlantic and another generation, but you know, in college, we were all in boarding houses and they were great. Small, usually about 20, 24 people in a boarding house, communal kitchen areas and, you know, interactive areas downstairs, and then bedsitters upstairs with communal bathrooms. We paid very little for them. And I think that's kind of economic housing that we might need, because when we start enforcing the four students in the house, they're not going to be able to afford it. The reason they're being able to afford it is because there are six in there. And so now when we start enforcing that, where are they going to go for affordable rentals? Well, boarding houses can offer something for them. And I think in the summer, they might even be converted to, you know, housing for some of our workers that come in and do the farming, especially in North Amherst where we're close to them. And so, I mean, it might have a dual function. I don't know whether the timing is exactly right for both of them, but there are options there to keep the town alive and working with people who don't have a lot of money. And so I'd like to add to the business of going back to the master plan, to really think of North Amherst in a different way and to try and do the fundamentals that are needed there. People have talked about the traffic circle. I think Cindy's brought it up, too. Now, we need to have those things in place before we can really make good use of that part of town for the whole town. And I think it has tremendous potential, also for tourism. It's a great start-off point, just as the notch is, for people to go out into the country. And just think differently, I think, is my request. And, yeah, work with us.
Can I ask? You mentioned boarding houses. Where do you think are appropriate places for boarding houses, in residential areas, business areas?
Well, I think the one thing about boarding houses should be that there is small, you know, option. I dread the sort of a 500-unit building being put up on Olympia Drive or even two 250 ones or whatever. And I don't even like, I don't think they're good living spaces for people. I don't think it's where people should live. And I think the people who come to this area know the importance of views and landscapes and outdoors, and that's why they want to be here. And then you're going to stick them in a high-rise, you know, apartment and you think, oh my God, you know, that's not, that's not going to feel good. And so maybe some of the acting out is to do with that, you know? And so I think, for instance, on Summer Street, there are, there's a, there's a house there that needs to be gutted and, you know, done something with. Recreate that into a boarding house attractively, so it looks like a farmhouse and goes back. It's got space outside it. Kids could grow stuff, they could sit outside, you know? I think these things are important to life and it helps them to learn how to live in a community. You need that. If, I mean, it's not just about the academics being at university, it's how to be in a community, how to live the rest of your life, which is going to be in community. And I think it's important that we give that opportunity, too.
The reason I ask is because boarding houses currently are not allowed in residential areas. So you're suggesting possibly.
There might be a rezoning.
Okay. Thank you.
To allow them in different places.
A couple of things. First, I think, I think, I agree with you, for what, whatever that's worth, that.
It's worth a lot.
Well, there's, there's a reason that I agree with you, and that is that property owners and students have, for the last 60 years, been trying to create those. We have a multi-faceted problem, and sort of the larger frame of the problem is that there simply isn't enough housing, period. So the students and the people who own property try to use the property that's there in as creative, sometimes often illegal, a way as they can in order to get as many people housed as they can. Many, many of Amherst's older, large older homes are de facto, and many people here have said this in one way or another, when speaking of illegal uses, are de facto lodging or boarding houses because the demand is there and for the reasons you also stated. It's about affordability. Students can't afford to pay, you know, the rent that would be required if it was only four people in a large house. That's another reason to look at the question of what do you tie occupancy to. But it's been a kind of a third rail, I have to tell you, that if people start talking about legitimizing boarding houses and regulating them as boarding houses, the fear is that will only legitimize what's there, the illegal occupancy. What it would instead do is, as all regulation does, is put it in a frame and say, okay, you can do this, but only in these ways. Only with this many right now, under the definition the town meeting just passed, a lodging or boarding house has from six to 10 residents, not 20 to 24, although I agree with you that there are ways in which that could be done that would be entirely manageable and would not have substantial impacts beyond its boundaries. But it's, I just want you to know that that's a difficult thing for the community to deal with. And I know the board, when we were considering this question coming through the summer, looked at two things having to do with lodging or boarding houses, whether to look at the regulations in terms of permitting, where it was allowed and where it wasn't, or whether to just address the definition. And they decided to just address the definition because they wanted to go forward and get, have things that people could agree on and get some success and get some momentum. If you're recommending, and I think it makes some sense, to look at this question, maybe we should start looking at it. I don't know that we would resolve it quickly enough for the next town meeting. We might take some more time on it to look at it carefully.
I don't, I think the students have demonstrated that they can live in incredibly small spaces, for one thing.
Yeah, that's right. The durable factor.
But I also think that, I hope you won't zone certain areas or something for this, that this, this is the kind of thing that needs to be dealt with quite discreetly and in one or two and in appropriate places. I mean, there's a house that's falling down on East Pleasant Street next to the cemetery, okay, on one side. Well, that one might be a good spot to put one, you know? But then they'll put another one right up the street from it, you know? They're better when they're separated out. The students will be more involved with the community if they're not right next to another one with more students in it. So I'm not suggesting any sort of, you know, zoning for.
There are regulatory approaches that do just that, that say you can have this use, but it has to be a certain distance from another such use. There are ways to deal with that. If I could, I'd like to speak to one other question and then I'm quite sure Connie has something to say about this discussion. I think there is a really fundamental misunderstanding about the master plan. The master plan does not say in these village centers, we will do X. What it says is that the town overall, the community, has said that new development should, number one, preferentially go into the existing developed areas, number two, be done in an appropriate and sensitive manner. And if you read the master plan, it makes that clear. And then it says, when it's talking about the map, it says, we haven't resolved this because we didn't go in the master plan from, through every single village center and say, this is what should go here, this is what should go there. Instead, what will happen is, as the community goes forward and looks at these village centers, it will figure out what the master plan principles mean in that village center. And that's really what we're trying to do.
I think we need to do that before we go forward with anything. I think that's exactly right.
I think that process happens as we go through each one and.
Yeah, but in a sort of comprehensive way. Yeah.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. A number of people have mentioned kind of wanting to go back and kind of reengage with the planning process, similar to the charrette. And even though we didn't pass village center rezoning the last time, and even though we've kind of stalled on any new work on the gateway area, sometimes things kind of percolate and I get a sense that there's some amount of consensus that something should happen in those areas, but we don't necessarily agree or have the roadmap of what that's going to be. And so one of my questions is, what resources do we actually have to reengage in the next iteration of that planning process? Because often, things don't go all the way through the first time, but seeds are sown and we come together with some of our thinking. We echoed things over these last six months. So I'm interested in sort of capturing people's energy for where we have consensus and can move forward with all three of those areas. And then I just want to say, in the boarding house, I'm not going to go into great detail, but in 1970, I lived on Ball Lane with a group of people, including members of a band, and we expanded out to the third floor of a house and insulated it all illegally, without permission, and we had a great time in our own group living. It was more than four people. I don't think we even were aware of that. And we went on to actually occupy a farmhouse in Montague out of that. So I'm open to that, but I think the political reality, as Mr. Tucker said, is a third rail. You can paint the ideal, you know, this could work and it does work, but once you propose changing the bylaw to allow more than four people or these more alternative forms of living, I think we get back into that definition of family. If we call it family, which we've toyed around with, you have a way to move into the sort of intentional living, group living, you could call it boarding house. But I think if you're just going into neighborhoods.
Group living, if you like.
Yeah, but if you go into neighborhoods and say, we're going to let five people live here, or we're going to let 20 people have, I think we're not there. I think when it works, it works really well, and it is affordable and it is practice for life stages that go on out from there. But I'm very dubious about how we would package and present that idea, this given.
I think it has to be done slowly. I think, you know, like right now, we've got one illegal boarding house, and then I think what we need to have is maybe one legal, ideally located boarding house, and then maybe we could have another.
So I'm intrigued with it, but I'm very wary of putting, going too far in that direction right now until we get some others.
Thanks. Ms. Burgess. Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to call Ms. Fitch. Nope, okay. Okay, go ahead. Ms. Burgess?
I'm Joan Burgess, Precinct Nine. I would like to urge the zoning board subcommittee and also the planning board to really set priorities for what needs to be done in the next four months, because really, that's all you have until the next town meeting is four months. And in my mind, I see the rental regulations as a huge job to get done and prepared for presentation at town meeting. And while I know that the working group is in charge of this, it's clear that it's town staff who's doing a lot of the work. I'm sure Jonathan Tucker would agree to that. And, you know, I was at the meeting, was it yesterday? Yeah, I think it was. And there were three members of the planning board there. So I think it's very realistic to think that the town staff is going to be putting a lot of time into this, which means, you know, there's not going to be time to devote to a lot of other things. In addition to setting realistic goals for a short period of time, one thing is not mentioned, that was mentioned at the working group yesterday, is one of the goals is to come up with some sort of parking regulations for rental houses. And I know in the past, that's been a zoning board, a zoning thing, and what I've gone through was a zoning bylaw. I know now they're talking about maybe doing it as a general bylaw. But at any rate, I suspect that you will be pulled into that and to do a lot of developing, and I don't see that on your list. So that's really my recommendation. Thank you.
If I could, my earlier comment about, and I'm glad Ms. Burgess raised that question, about the fact that as the rental regulations are developed and decisions are made or proposed in terms of the form that they should take and the impact that they should have in terms of things like parking and so forth, you may be asked to go and look at the corresponding zoning. Right now, in the drafting process, we're trying to draft things so that everything is consistent and makes sense. But we may, as part of the rental regulation process, say, well, wait a minute, that would be better. And that's not what the zoning bylaw does. So we may, under this category down here, be sort of handing you a number of issues to consider in terms of amending the zoning bylaw to keep these things in tandem. But I, don't worry about how much work there is. We'll take care of it.
I have a question about the parking issue, because I was looking at the report generated by the housing, the new housing, what's his title?
Housing Production Plan.
No, the housing.
Sheltering Committee?
No, the housing inspector, not Rob Mora, but.
Code Enforcement?
Code Enforcement. Yeah, yeah, John. And a lot of them were parking on the lawn complaints. And so the report said that he had issued notices of violation. So my understanding is, I mean, to me, that's good news because I, but my understanding is that what we passed is only for future, for, is it, I guess, the question is, is it currently legal or illegal to park on one's lawn?
It's currently illegal under zoning, which means that if the owner of the property can demonstrate that they have a past pattern, can prove they had a past pattern of parking in the manner in which they're parking, then it's grandfathered. If they can't, then it's not, and it's in violation of the regulations. And our code enforcement officer, Mr. Thompson, can hand them a ticket and say, don't do that anymore. And that's what a lot of the violations are about. And hopefully, we're actually, we're not out in the neighborhoods all that often, but those who are, hopefully, are now beginning to notice that. but those who, who are, hopefully, you're not beginning to notice that there, there are some differences being made.
Laura Fitch, Precinct One. Although I often represent the Puffer family, I'm not actually speaking on their behalf tonight. This is my own values. These are my own values. I just want to talk mostly about infill development. I heard it suggested tonight that, that infill development might be ruining our existing neighborhoods. I, you know, when I think about smart growth and I think about global warming and some of the, like, I mean, that's like a global issue. And who's the, you know, smartest person on the planet around global warming would be Bill McKibben. I heard him speak today on the Commonwealth Club or whatever it's called. And I just can't accept that we should choose sprawl over infill and that people need to live near transportation, they need to live where there's already sewer and water, and that I'm willing, you know, I realize my sacrifice isn't that great, because on Pulp Hill Road, you know, I'm surrounded by, you know, I'm not surrounded with the issues that people are facing in neighborhoods where the students are behaving badly. But I, I sincerely believe this from everything that I've studied about planning and architecture and the environment. And I want infill development. I want that to be what happens in Amherst. I want us to lead. And, you know, when people talk about putting student housing on University Drive, I think, well, then we're just sending our businesses to Hadley, as it is, I have to more or less get in a car to drive to Hadley. I don't, because I can go to the North Amherst Community Farm. But, you know, the more we put in North Amherst where I can bicycle or walk there, and, and also, the demographics are that young kids want to live in villages, they want to live near transportation. They are smart enough to, to know that they're not going to survive in the suburbs. And that's where baby boomers want to move, is into the villages. So, I rest my case that we should be supporting infill development over everything else.
Before I go, could you suggest specific ways of promoting infill development?
Well, the form-based zoning in the village center, well, not so much the form-based, but the village center rezoning to allow mixed use in our village centers, that was proposed for both North Amherst and for Atkins, made a lot of sense to me. And I love the idea of boarding houses, too, because I don't know necessarily the, the definition of them, but I assume that they're run by somebody who lives there. And since we all know that that's better, then I don't really care how many students they have to take care of, as long as they're taking care of them.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, before I get, anyone who has not spoken? Go ahead, Mr. Fox.
John Fox, Precinct Ten. I don't disagree with Ms. Fitch that there is a need for infill and smart growth. I would suggest that we need smart infill. And a lot of what has been proposed as infill, I don't think is smart, but there are lots of areas in town, not necessarily just village centers, where we could have really interesting, wonderful development. And, you know, we really ought to look at those proposals. They need to be well-planned, supervised with students, but a lot of it, you know, we had that whole Gateway consultancy about how to develop housing that would attract seniors, empty nesters, and the rest. My background is to live downtown, my wife in Washington, D.C., so we really liked the idea of a vibrant downtown. So, we've been, you know, forced to fight about all sorts of things, about infill that we, we don't think is, is wise, but I think smart infill, efficient, you know, all of these things are, are important. So, I very much welcome thinking through what is smart infill. Just one other unrelated thing. We have been waiting for some time, unless it's there and I'd have missed it, for complaint forms that would be easy to access where, where, where people in town could file complaints, where they believe the parking is excessive or wrong, and you could come in and cite where the place is, the date, et cetera, where you believe there's more than foreign-related, be able to cite the date, et cetera, and create a real record. I think that record is very important for the zoning board of appeals when they hear cases. It's very important that we be able to document, rather than just people's moan and groan. So, people should be encouraged to, not to be complainers, but if there's a real violation, to be able to, to put that on record and not have to try to call somebody on the phone. You can go to your computer and do that. So, I hope that is done sooner rather than later. We've been talking about it for some time.
That, that's underway. Part of the challenge is, we have a, our permit tracking system and sort of our information management system, which is called Munis, has a lot of moving parts. And essentially, as we go along adding things to it, we're, we're either reusing existing facilities within it, or we're building them, we're creating them. Our software guys are, are in there working with the company to, to figure it out. So, it's not as simple as putting up sort of a standard little form on a, on a webpage that you would use. It's because we want the information where everybody can get at it and where everybody sees it right away. And so, yeah, we're working on that. And the building commission, I know, has that as a priority.
I think, I think you have the materials actually from Norman, Oklahoma, where they have just a form where they believe parking has been excessive or wrong. And you just, you just go into that form and you mark it, and so, it's got to be a fairly easy way for people to access that. I'm sure you, you, you know how to do it, Mr. Tucker, and we'll do it. Just encouraging, I know you have a huge list of things to do, but, but, but we ought to get to that so that it informs the zoning board as they hear cases. Thank you very much.
Ms. Fitch, do you want to say something?
I just wanted to back up what Jonathan just said, because there was a Munis training, I believe it was either today or yesterday, on just that topic of how to deal with complaint forms in Munis. So, that means that it's getting down to the staff level, so it should get to the public reasonably soon.
Mr. Rosman. Could you come to the microphone if it's not?
Thanks, Berv. I, I wonder if I could ask for some feedback on a particular matter. For example, Ms. Streeter made some written comments, I believe they're available over on the, on the table, regarding the proposed historic district in North Amherst. We haven't heard anything about that here, and I wonder if I could just ask some of you from North Amherst, I don't know, Ms. Adams, Ms. Perrow, anybody. I'm not asking you to speak for or against the issue that the proponents have put forward, but the idea that the action in trying to create a historic district may delay any particular rezoning in that area, do you think that that would be an impact, that we should wait until it happens, or that we shouldn't wait until it happens? Take it into account? Just whatever. I'd like to hear from somebody in the area about that particular issue.
Ms. Hold.
I'm Pat Holland from North Amherst on Montague Road. And as you probably all know, the select board has approved the first step needed to explore having a local historic district in North Amherst. There already is a federal one, but a local historic district would have more teeth in it. And so, we're right now in the process of gathering people who, or seeking people who might want to be on, on such a committee and making recommendations to the select board. The, there, the, there are various strategies, and I suppose it's presumptuous of me to speak about them before a committee is formed, but we've talked informally about a strategy where a great deal of North Amherst would actually be in this historic district. Now, we might very well decide that that's not practical for any number of reasons. So, but it is, that's under consideration at any rate, that it might, for example, go up to the border with Leverett on Montague Road, and then the border with Hadley on Meadow Street and so forth. And there are some other borders to the south that are, technically constitute a...
Do you think that we should withhold trying to bring back North Amherst rezoning in such a way to create a vulnerable or, or a residential housing?
Well, this is strictly, this would be strictly my personal view, mind you, of course. And I think that it would be probably an excellent idea to postpone that until there's been at least some consensus on what would be the boundary of a historic district, and also, what would be the rules within it, how much change would be allowed, for example, or desired, at least. So, I think holding off on, on debating, on taking up zoning in North Amherst would be, would be very wise, actually.
Can I ask, maybe Mr. Tucker can answer this. Is, is, would a local historic district set of standards obviate the need for a form-based code? Could they work together, or are they, is it one or the other? Mr. Tucker?
They, they would work together and independently. You don't have to, zoning and the, the design, what are essentially design regulations for a local historic district are not in conflict necessarily. If one, if the local historic district process did not allow something that the zoning would otherwise allow, then the local historic district process would, would prevail. So, it's not, there isn't, you don't have to sort of wait until you've got them all in perfect synchrony here, because I doubt that they could be in synchrony. There's so much variation in what happens on individual properties. I think the, the fact that a local historic district was being considered, wherever the boundaries were, would affect the way in which the community would think about the rezoning, both its content and its boundaries. So, I don't, I don't think there's necessarily a need where the, the timing is affected in one way or another.
So, now I'll speak as a member of the new Historic District Commission that has not yet met, and so, obviously, I do not speak for that commission, but, so, the local historic district bylaw regulates any alteration of an exterior architectural feature visible from a public way. That's what it does. And Section Eight of the, of the Dickinson Historic District Bylaw that was adopted by the town meeting last spring, sets forth the determinate, you know, governs determinations on applications for local historic district permits by the members of the commission. And essentially, it's about consistency. The essential standard is consistency with the building that's being, architecture, that's being modified, or, and consistency with the manner in which that building is being modified in relation to the surrounding, surrounding buildings. So, it's obviously relevant to any kind of zone, form-based zoning. And it would, it would be relevant to any kind of, you know, expected replacement kind of development, where a house would be, a building would be demolished and replaced by some kind of multi-use kind of building, or just new multi-use. In every case, the Historic District Commission would have to make a determination about the consistency of whatever that thing would look like, that building would look like, in relation to what surrounds it or how it's been changed. So, I would say, in some important sense of use, I don't see that it's really relevant to use. It's not directly relevant to use, but it surely would have a significant impact on, you know, on the, the achievement of whatever would be intended by, by rezoning.
As Mr. Tucker just mentioned, it seems like the two are coming together. This is more of a political question of whether we should get involved with rezoning while some other, while your group is considering the historic...
Well, I would suggest you think of them as, maybe they could work hand in hand, but they would be in a very complicated manner. It's one thing for there to be a local historic district here in the Dickinson District, where there's not a heck of a lot of, you know, of change. And to, and to place a new historic district in a location where you're, you're intending to promote change, because by definition, a local historic district is going to be a break on change. It's not going to, and the question is how flexible it's going to be, but it's definitely going to make change a little bit more, a little bit more complicated, if only because a permit's going to be required, that, from another body, you know, taking into account these other considerations.
So, granted, if we can...
Well, my, yes, well, I don't know, I, it has to do, it's a question of how important the rezoning is. I'm just, but if you really ask my personal view, the answer would be yes. Ms. Fitch?
I'm going to take the, Laura Fitch, District One. I'm going to take the opposite position on this. I believe that sometimes the best way to preserve a neighborhood and a building is to allow new uses. And recently, I attended a conference at UMass that was sponsored by the Western Mass AIA, but it was all about green buildings and historic preservation. And the woman from the Massachusetts Historic, I don't, maybe Steve was there, so I, I may not have it right, because it's been a few months now, but I believe she was from Massachusetts Historic District, and basically, she said that people are changing their, commission, yeah, changing their position, where they used to be, no, preserve the building exactly this, and now they're saying, no, insulate it, green it up, because if you don't, it will never survive. And I think earlier tonight, Ms. Holmes mentioned that her barn is falling down, and that if she could change her use and get more income on her property, she could, you know, maybe continue to live there. So, it's not incidental that barns are falling down all over the place because people can't afford to keep them up unless they can put new uses in their buildings. We have in place a demolition delay, and you're talking about extending it. So, in the meanwhile, you know, if it takes 12 to 18 months to get the historic district in place, and you have an 18-month demolition delay, I think they can go forward with the And then, the history of North Amherst is one of mixed use that has been lost. Why not recreate the mixed use that was once there? Isn't that more in keeping and more important than an individual building or an individual barn? Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
Maureen Adams, Precinct Ten. And again, I'm talking for myself. We're, we're trying to get a historic district set up in the Lincoln Avenue Sunset area, which is already historic nationally, and including a larger district that would involve McClellan, Bestin, Cosby, Page, which are really interesting working-class neighborhoods that in many cases were the working class that worked for the people who were on Lincoln Avenue and the Sunset. So, I mean, there's a very interesting history there that we want to maintain, and we're exploring the historic district as a way to do that, although, as with North Amherst, we're in the early stages, and the boundaries are still not set. And indeed, the principles behind the boundaries are themselves in discussion, because usually, historic districts are for fine old houses and not slightly scrungy kind of working-class houses that we've managed to keep in their slightly scrungy mode. So, I think it's an interesting question. Now, I want to take that question back to your issue about zoning, because I really want to ask, zoning toward what end? My remarks earlier about the contradictions between infill and preservation were meant to note contradictions, but not that they couldn't in some way coexist. And I think that a lot of the difficulty that we've experienced in our own area is because of the uncontrolled use and the commercial incentives to cram as many students, because that is the market, into the houses that look fine from the outside unless you're worried about parking and traffic and noise and nuisance. Now, it indeed may be, we're pinning a lot of hopes on the permits that we're looking for in the spring. We're hoping that this will be a game changer, that there really will be permits... We're hoping that this will be a game changer, that there really will be permits, and that landlords and owners who do not maintain noise levels, prevent nuisance, and abide by zoning regulations will have their permits pulled. We really hope that will happen. And that management companies will become qualified management companies and will not be trying to get the most houses for the fewest professionals looking after those houses. So if the permit system really does manage the difficulty that we've been experiencing, then indeed, we could have a -- I don't want to call it a compromise, but a mixed use in which there were numbers of people living in houses, as long as the parking was managed, as long as the noise was kept under control, and as long as it genuinely was a mixed use, that there were families there as well as students. My difficulty from Gateway on was we were arguing mixed use, which is a value that I share, but actually working on a plan for students. When you go back to the contract that was signed to Gateway, it was a contract that the university agreed with the town that this would be for significant student use. And student use needs a kind of permit in place. And student use, when it becomes exploded into all student houses, means that there will no longer be families and that will no longer be mixed use. So I really think that we have all agreed that this is a complicated situation. We've all agreed that it involves zoning, historic preservation, infill, and management. And I think we have to be very clear that if we're talking about mixed use, as I believe Ms. Fitch was, I'm not imagining that as a student complex. And that, I think, has been part of the difficulty in our discussions earlier, because we have not been honest and consistent in what we mean when we talk about mixed use. If mixed use means some student rentals and families and some commercial use, fine. I think we agree. But if mixed use means that the neighborhood is going to turn into even permitted student rentals with no families in an area that had been a historic neighborhood, that's not fine. And that, I think, is an issue that is much bigger than zoning, but it includes zoning.
Mr. Tucker?
Ms. Adams, I have a question for you. I wasn't on the board when the Gateway planning process happened, so I'm a little bit, you know, I'm filling in from what I've heard people talk about over an amount of time. But this is the first time I've heard it mentioned that because there was an agreement with UMass, this was then going to be student housing, I mean predominantly student. And somehow, and I'm -- this is my impression I'm getting from what you just said, it's sort of light bulbs. Sounds like maybe the planning was tainted because there was this assumption that this was really about the university's agenda for student housing, which is not how I understood what I thought was being planned there. So it's interesting to me that you brought that up in that manner, because I wonder if people feel suspect of the prior Gateway process because of it was like a UMass deal.
Let me just make one remark and then cede this to Mr. Fox. All that I want to say is I followed that very closely. The university, through the foundation, was giving land to the town in order that certain things be done. I think it was a way, frankly, in my view, around Pecheco, a way to do a private-public arrangement. When it was not possible to do that, the university pulled its deal, its offer back. So it seemed to me perfectly clear that the university's offer had strings attached. Whatever else we hoped for as a town, there were strings attached. And so from my point of view, it tainted it from day one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let Stephen respond first, and then I'll fill in if there's anything.
I can't speak for UMass nor the people who are doing the negotiating for UMass, but I think that there were good intentions. The good intentions would be that the town would get a tax base, which it wouldn't get if -- or, you know, basically taxable property that it wouldn't otherwise get. And UMass would get housing for students, whether they're graduate students or undergraduates. But I -- that's how I always understood it, that it was -- they were trying to respond to a need that they've heard with land that they owned and could do anything with. By giving it to the town, they'd be giving up that right, and they would also be getting housing.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would echo what Steve said, and it was never my understanding that the university had any kind of strings attached, that, in fact, the people in the charrette, the members of the public, were very emphatic in wanting mixed use to mean empty nesters and young families, maybe young professors starting at the university. And that's what the consultant really worked at. And with all of the plans that they came back with, that's what their intention was.
If I may, there was a historical sequence here, and Ms. Adams is not wrong, and I think Mr. Schreiber has sort of re-described it, that the original intent, which was something that was developed in conversations between the then-town manager, previous town manager, and UMass's representatives, was, as Steve described, that there would be a swap, that the town would be able to sort of broker the development of this three-plus, maybe four-acre property, and there would be housing put on there, would be predominantly for students. And the trade-off was, in that original, really statement of intent, to say that it's a contract is false. It's not -- it was never a contract. It was a -- because, for one thing, UMass is much too cautious to sign a contract. It was really a statement of intent that that was what they were trying to do. Almost immediately, that even without the concern of neighbors, which was immediately voiced, that ran into the grit. The grit got in the mechanism, because the manager handed it to the redevelopment authority. And the Amherst redevelopment authority started doing field trips. And John and a number of others were on those field trips. They went to Hanover, New Hampshire, they went to Mansfield, Connecticut, they looked at what other communities were doing, and it was clear that the mechanism that was being used, and John will, I think, pretty much at the drop of a hat, be able to quote my statements at any number of those meetings, to the effect that if this goes completely as student housing, it's untenable. The town won't do it. Town can't do it, because it won't work. So it changed. It changed before, while that town manager was in place, and then Mr. Muzandi, that manager left, and Mr. Muzandi became town manager. And at that point, the entire game changed, because what happened was, he started the process over again. He said, let's go back to square one, we're going to look at everything all over again, we're going to hire consultants, we're going to bring it in, we're going to have a public process, rather than this sort of directed, town manager says, go get me a project kind of thing. And from then on, it was something entirely different. And whatever UMass's intentions were, the town's intentions for its involvement were something entirely different. And that is why we got, as Mr. Carson described, the result we got out of the charrette, because the community participated in that charrette and said what would be -- what should be there. And that is that foundation of what percolation, as Ms. Krueger has said, that is sitting there waiting until we have these other studies done, which were part of the -- you will recall, were part of the process, and then go forward again with the next stage of visioning and planning for that particular project, extending the downtown up to the university border. It was -- so that's a little more nuanced understanding of this. There was whatever UMass's intentions were, are or were, and I can't represent them, and they've, as usual, gone through chancellors like Kleenex, and we -- and, you know, so their intentions are up in the air. The town's intentions are that plan, that kind of process, and the results that that kind of process produces.
Mr. Fox?
John Fox, Precinct 10. What Mr. Tucker said, I think, is exactly right. But I'd just like to add a couple of details, which really created this atmosphere of suspicion and distrust. There was an agreement that was suddenly in the newspapers, suddenly announced among the university, the town, and the Amherst redevelopment authority, that said that this transaction would occur, that the land would be turned over to the town, the town would turn it over to a developer through the Amherst redevelopment authority. And nobody knew about that. I mean, suddenly, this huge block of land that had been previously occupied by four or five fraternities, which the university thought was so awful because of the way they had treated the properties, and it looked awful, that they bought it and tore down all the fraternities. And suddenly, out of nowhere, there was this plan to restore 400, 500, 600 students to that area. And it just seemed, how in the world did this happen, without any preliminary, without any discussion? So a number of us attended those early Amherst redevelopment authority meetings, where Larry Schaefer was the town manager, who told me, and I knew Larry, I knew him well, and he was a friend for lots of reasons, but we couldn't disagree more. He said, John, we're going to be able to put maybe 600 students there. We think that they, if we could, we'd be primarily from out of state, so that the university would be able to get much higher, would be able to keep the tuitions, because if they're out of state, they can keep the tuitions, I believe, whereas if they're in-state, they have to send them to the state and they get some back. And he said, what will be wonderful is that that will actually secure your neighborhood as a residential neighborhood, because it would satisfy all the demand of students, pretty much. And I can't tell you exactly what I said to Larry, but I --
You're on TV.
So there was this, it wasn't really just suspicion. This was really our town manager believing that this would be a sensible thing to do, and we obviously didn't think so. The piece that you saw, Bruce, which was a really interesting construct, was exactly the timeline where it had all changed, and where there were these charrettes and everything, and when people came forward and then discussed a true mixed-use development in Gateway. I still believe it could be a true mixed use, and I hope that we can proceed with some kind of sensible development, which really serves the town, it serves the university, but it clearly preserves the neighborhood. So this is complicated. But I think that what Johnny Longo had in mind was not primarily something for students. He was talking about graduate students and primarily older people returning, graduates, seniors, and he thought we could really attract, if we could have an attractive mixed-use development, not only there, but going into town. I hope we can do that, because that's very much what I favor.
Mr. Stutzman?
Thanks, Stutzman. Precinct 8. I was just wondering if traditionally, the zoning board views mixed use as a definition of who occupies a particular property? Or is it, say, residential and commercial as opposed to?
The definition, when I hear mixed use, I think that it means residence and business.
Is it, in fact, within the board or anyone's power to zone who can or cannot live somewhere?
No.
Okay.
No. What, if I may, what the ways, there are a variety of ways in which residency is encouraged or discouraged. If you have fewer bedrooms and higher rents, students, as was discussed before, could get priced out of it for the most part. And so that, and that's more attractive to a different demographic. There are other ways to do that, but it's not about zoning.
On the topic of students being priced out, it seems that if the goal of a number of people is to encourage more affordable housing and workforce housing, that students aren't going to be priced out versus that demographic on a per-bedroom basis. So with the form-based code we had, for instance, when you're trying to encourage, let's roll with the mixed use meaning students and non-students for now, did form-based code in some way encourage non-students versus students?
It did, if I may.
You think it did, yes.
The -- it did in a variety of ways. It limited bedroom size, studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, some three bedrooms, and an even mix, an averaged mix of those, so that there was no predominance of units with larger bedrooms, but some representation of each of those. There were areas in which uses that were mixed uses, which automatically had some business activity, were encouraged over others. There were areas within which, along Sunderland Road, where, which had been determined through the community planning process to be more of a commercial corridor, only mixed-use buildings and no residence-only buildings could occur within the first 100 feet back from the street. It was to create that corridor that was principally retail, office, whatever, although there could be upstairs apartments. So there were a variety of ways in which it tried to sort of shape things so that you had a real mix of opportunities for different kinds of folks to live there.
So I think, given that there's so much reluctance to add any sort of infill development in the town, in the village centers or anywhere else, under this assumption that it's going to be occupied by students, which may very well be the case, I think it would really behoove these efforts to, given that there's a spectrum of priorities within the form-based code that was proposed, and clearly, this is one of them, but I think also preserving a historic look was one of them, I really think if the emphasis was placed in the form-based code on ensuring this mixed use, to use the term as we have so far tonight, I think you'd be able to have a very powerful tool in your kit to rezone areas for infill, and people would feel more comfortable that it's not going to be 100% students.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last words? We'd like to wrap up and step out for a minute. Anything else from the committee?
There was not a great deal of discussion of some of the -- some of the potential articles. You have the, I would actually encourage you to take these home, the additional materials that you received, and go through them prior to your next meeting. The next meeting will be January 16th. I trust you'll give a report to the planning board this evening, but I don't think any decisions will probably be made. You might, what you've done in the past is develop recommendations at the subsequent meeting, and then take those to the planning board for its review.
Yep.
I just wanted to wrap up by saying, I personally, as a member of the subcommittee in the planning board, am interested in village center rezoning and moving on, and I'm loosely including the Gateway area in that. And that's my interest, and I would like to see that run on a parallel track with other studies, plans, historic district considerations, because my experience over many years here has proven that there's always a next piece of information or a next piece of work, and I don't want to stop our planning process in looking at those areas. I think there's still a lot of ground to cover in public input and reshaping and revisiting some of the work we've already done. So I'd like to keep, and just for me, coming out of this, I feel like I owe it to the public to say where I'm at, I'd like, I would really prioritize those areas for work, now that we've gotten some of our issues behind us that we worked on so hard in the fall. So I, for one, would like to keep going on all of the rezoning efforts in tandem with other considerations that are happening, because I think there'll always be other emerging issues at the same time. So that's just what I, that's my position.
I think there's a lot of things to say. I think we had, we discussed having a, dedicating all or most of a meeting to TDR soon, but perhaps the next meeting, we should reflect on this zoning forum, attempt to prioritize things so that we can report to the planning board, involve them, and then do TDR at the second meeting in January. So anyone who did not get a chance to speak tonight, please feel free to submit comments to the planning department. They will distribute them to the full planning board, and we will definitely give everything good consideration. We're going to wrap up, and see you next time.